Do you mind hitting record, please? MCTV, you ready?
All set.
All right. Mayor, whenever, Mike.
Okay, let's, let's call this meeting into order and we'll start with roll call.
All right, Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Holliver.
Present.
Councilmember Fong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pappin.
Here.
Mayor Aliva.
Here.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you. Now, can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I am going to go to open the public hearing that we are continuing. But before that, we'll do a staff update report on the November 22nd closed session. Do we have anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. Tom Williams, City Manager. There is no reportable action from the November 22nd, 2022 closed session.
Thank you very much. So I would like to have any public communication for anything that is not on this agenda. Let me look and see. Any hands are raised?
There are none there.
I see none. Thank you, Elaine. And we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is the public hearing that we are continuing. And do I reopen it? Is that how we do it, Joan?
Yes, sorry, I had to unmute. Yes, just declare that you have reopened the public hearing. Mayor, did you hear me? Can anyone hear me?
I hear you perfectly. Thank you. Sorry. It was me that time. So with that being said, I'd like to open up the public hearing and turn it over to our city manager, who has done quite a bit of communication to get everything on a beautiful, I don't know if you're going to show a slide, but a beautiful presentation with all the comments that have been made from our last presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Again, good afternoon to you, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. We have our full team of consultants, Jim Harnish and his team from Inter Harnish, the staff from WRT, our environmental consultants that are here and available to answer questions. As we move forward, Roscoe, if you could, please bring up the presentation. As you know, we had a very extensive public hearing, and this is the continuance of that public hearing on the adoption of the general plan, the downtown specific plan and certification of the environmental impact report. And so we had received comments from the City Council during that public hearing on the November 15th item, as well as follow-up correspondence as directed from the City Council. All in all, we received 55 comments, or 57 comments, of which I have been corresponding with you individually, was able to receive those comments that we have incorporated for your consideration in the plan. And then I asked you to review that matrix, which you all have done, and then pull out those items for further discussion. And we have seven comments for further discussion, and I'm just going to jump right into it. As if you look at the matrix, we have the comments numbered. And so starting with comment number three, which is add, enhance parking availability, ensure pedestrian walkability and safeway and safety, excuse me, encourage meeting places, shopping and dining, and include this statement for Park Boulevard future improvements. And so we have done that. We've modified the language, you know, to promote the revitalization of El Camino Real into the Grand Boulevard that creates a welcoming gateway to the Millbury to improve pedestrian and bicycle mobility and safety, and enhance the streetscape along the corridor to create an inviting environment for all, encouraging transit ring development, residential and mixed-use development along El Camino Real that create an exciting place for people to live, work, shop and play. Improve signage and public safety throughout the corridor, enhance rapid transit for buses, enhance bus stops to provide shelter and real-time information. We will also include Park Boulevard. So we don't, you know, so we include that into the specific plan. So I'll open this up for any comment or additional communication, Mayor, that you or the council members may have.
It looks like Council Vice Mayor Pappin has a comment.
Yeah, I just had a typo. Buses was not plural. Enhance bus stop in the, in the draft that we got. Just want to make sure it's plural, please.
Good.
Easy enough.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Can we move to the next comment?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Comment 21 on the matrix. This was amend the Millbury Stationery Specific Plan to include all of the blocks from Chadbourne Avenue to Murchison Drive between Magnolia Avenue and El Camino Real. Roscoe, if you can go down to the, to the map real quick. So we had discussion about this, and the map on the right, we just hand drew in the, the boundary. The dark purple is already the existing station area specific plan. And the light pink area is included in the downtown. But after discussion and further analysis and working with WRT and the Mid-Tour Harness Group, we feel it is appropriate and it does make sense to include this area south of Chadbourne to Murchison Drive. So Chadbourne on your right, Murchison Drive on your left, between El Camino and Magnolia. And so this, this action would be to simply put this policy statement in, bring back an amendment to the Stationery Specific Plan to include these blocks. That large block on the far left, I think you all know that's the Safeway block in the shopping center. And so right across the street, we do have our MSASAP with the various land use, and I think it does make a lot of sense to include these blocks in a future amendment to the Stationery Specific Plan.
Okay, it looks like we have two comments. One front, we'll go to Councilmember Snyder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to the, there we go. The city manager and I did talk about this, and I still have reservations. I think it's a significant change, and I don't think the public has been properly vetted or included in the process. One of my main concerns is what does it really mean by putting it into the MSASP as opposed to the Downtown Specific Plan? What will it do to the adjacent properties? What will it do to the existing apartment buildings on Broadway that are I find them rather attractive? They open up into the public space, and I'm concerned what will happen to them. I'm also concerned that by moving it into a TOD, it may further reduce parking requirements. And to bring us all back to before COVID, we had SFO parkers, Bart parkers, Caltrain parkers, all parking on the Chadbourne, all the way up Chadbourne, all the way up Millbury Avenue, and on the cross streets on there. And I just don't think there's been enough analysis. Now, the city manager has told me that this would come back to City Council, it would come back to Planning Commission as part of MSASP amendment, and it would have to have an additional EIR. I don't understand who would pay for that. I just, I'm not ready to, I'm not prepared to vote for this. I'm also a little bit concerned about campaign donations and significant landholders in this area, and if they benefit or not, and will we lose our opportunity to negotiate for better community benefits? So I'm just not ready to vote for this today.
Okay, and let's just keep in mind, we're not, we are not approving any projects at this time. We are just trying to enhance the opportunities that we may have in Millbury. Count Vice Mayor Pappin, please.
Um, did, does staff want to address anything else that Councilmember Snyder said at this point?
Well, I would, I mean, I, there really wasn't a question there, but, but we have worked with WRT and our planning staff, and we think this does make a lot of sense. We think it makes sense. And kind of the question is, this should have actually been part of the original Millbury Stationery Specific Plan, given its proximity to the Bart Station and Caltrain Station. The brown area just to the north, the existing land use already allows for, for density of 80 units per acre, as we discussed at the November 15th hearing. And so I think that, you know, again, this is not the decision, as the mayor said, of what the land use and densities FAR. This is just a decision to say these blocks should be included in amendment to the Millbury Stationery Specific Plan, and the policy direction is staff put that out there and then, and then, you know, move forward with amendments and bring that back. I think as, as Councilmember Snyder said, that has to go through a process. It's got to go, you know, community meetings, Planning Commission, back to the City Council, it has to go through the SEQA review. So this is a policy statement that simply says add these blocks into, to the Millbury Stationery Specific Plan. It also makes sense because any land use changes along this corridor would then be, be applicable citywide. Maintaining these important blocks where, where high density opportunity should occur because of the proximity to transit. It also then protects the other areas. I think as the council knows, SB 35, we have a situation, you know, further north on Broadway, 99 units, no parking and an administrative review process that's not dictated by, by the city of Millbury. That's dictated by state law. So in, 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 in our professional opinion, this actually protects the overall area, but also allows, you know, potential amendments for the type of housing that HCD, we're going through our housing element right now. I think this will be beneficial in our housing element process to put density where it needs to be near transit.
Thank you. Gina, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you. Yeah, I'm, in my discussions with city staff, I viewed this as a prime opportunity, given that it's already multi-unit housing. I think the potential for the, I don't even know who the, you know, who we have property owner wise in here, but it would blend better and give us a better opportunity with HDC in the future. So I think that this is a great idea in that that whole section, we've got several blocks in there, and if you've driven through there, several of the buildings are quite old, some are brand new, but some are quite old, and I think we have an opportunity to really increase our density in that area with close proximity to transit. So I, I think this is a good idea. And again, we don't have anything specific before us, but is, the idea of the general plan is to enhance the opportunities for the city to grow in such a way that it benefits our residents and the city as a whole. So I support this and look forward to whatever comes before us in the future here. I guess we'll have to have several other meetings regarding this, but I think it's a great opportunity. So I hope that council will go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliver.
Thank you. I think since, you know, the direction here would be to, you know, amend the MSASP to include these blocks. It's not specifically to set an 85-foot height limit, as, as I interpret this. I think I would be okay with that. I think we do need to be cognizant, though, you know, City Manager Williams mentioned the, you know, Density Bonus Act and whatnot. If, if, you know, if we allow an 85-foot height limit, what does that mean with a density bonus? Is that 120 feet? So I think, you know, before any height limit, height limits are changed. I think that's something we really would need to, to consider. I don't believe there are other properties, you know, that aren't facing, any other parcels, you know, that aren't along El Camino Real with 85-foot height limits in the, the proposed general plan update. I think they, you know, are what, 65 feet? Anything fronting, I don't have it in front of me, fronting Millbury Avenue or Magnolia, but there aren't, there aren't any other 85-foot limits. So you know, I think we hold off on that for now, but perhaps move forward to amending the MSASP. Thank you.
So Councilmember Holl, Councilmember Holliver, are you speaking in favor of this?
Well, the recommendation is to, what, pursue MSASP amendments, right? It's not to amend the general plan to set the height limits on these parcels at 85 feet. Am I wrong?
No, no, that is correct. That's correct.
Well, I'm confused. I'm sorry. I get clarification here because 65, 85, and then 120, Councilmember Holliver mentioned. Can somebody clarify? I don't know what's happening here.
Well, to symbolize by this, what Councilmember Holliver is asking is, are you making any land use changes? Height, FAR, density changes, if you adopt the general plan today, you're not. But this policy simply states the city, city staff will pursue an amendment to the Millbury Stationery Specific Plan in the future to include these blocks. Now, what, what the densities and height and FAR, that, that's to be determined when we go through that process. That, that's not determined by this action. The action of the council, if you approve this, is just simply the policy direction, amend the MSASAP to include these blocks.
And Councilmember Holliver, you'd be okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have three votes on that one. Can we possibly move to the next?
I dare. Another issue I brought up with the city manager, and this relates to Millbury's ability to get more points in by pedestrian improvement grants, is where then is our priority development area boundaries? The city south of us, Burlingame South to the Santa Clara border, include their PDAs farther into their residential neighborhood. And I have been on scoring teams where they have gotten more points for projects that are nowhere near being a PDA, but because they've included residential neighborhoods in the PDA, we're able to get PDA-specific grant funding. And in Millbury and San Bruno, our PDA is just one block off El Camino Real. And I don't think, I don't know if it fits here, but I strongly believe that we need to expand our PD, our priority development area boundaries, so that we are more competitive in grant funding. And I didn't get that in on my, my fifth, you know, the comments that we got in by two weeks ago.
Okay, I, I appreciate the comment. I just want to stay kind of with the agenda that we have fixed here. So
We're approving a general plan that means our ability to get grants. I understand.
If I may, real quick.
Okay, I'm still going to be a no vote on this. Fine. That's okay.
It's okay.
Mayor, that makes sense to us to include this area when we bring back the amendment to look at including this into the PDA. So I think that's a good
Exactly that. I was just going to say that. But we do have three votes on this particular item. So can we please move on to the next one? City Manager?
Okay, going back up, the the next comment, comment number 22. Buses shall not stop in traffic lanes on El Camino Real. Bus routes shall utilize parking areas and spaces outside of traffic lanes to stop. We do have our transportation consultant here that can make some comments on this if, if, if the council desires. We also received a letter from Sam Trans dated November 18th, indicating that this is not their practice and that their practice is to maintain in their bus routes, bus stops within the through lanes. And, and they've gone through studies indicating that it's more efficient for the buses actually to, to stay in their lanes and not have bus pullouts.
Councilmember Holliver, did you have a comment on this? This was your request, but were you, do you, are you willing to accept the comments and the research that was done?
Yes, I would like to have that policy statement included in some way. You know, the, on the response matrix, all it said was refer to Sam Trans' letter dated November 18th, 2022. You know, I, I appreciate their feedback, but, you know, they should not be dictating our general plan. So I would like that policy statement included in there in some capacity. Thank you.
Sounds fair enough to me. Is, are there any other comments on that?
Yes.
Is that Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I agree with Councilman Holliver. I read that letter. There was a term, City Manager, that I wrote to you. I didn't understand, and I was trying to find in my notes that term that they use, that they either want to stop in a traffic lane, or they want to do this other thing. And it's in, it's, it's in their letter. It's not in our general plan language, but I don't know what it means. Can you find the email that I sent to you? At any rate, I agree with Councilman Holliver. It is not, I, I have yet to see Sam Trans do anything that actually helps Millbury and has, you know, their comment that we're a big regional transportation area, so we should do what they say. I find offensive. So I agree with Councilman.
Perfect. Any other comments? All right, so can we please include that and move that along with the letter from Sam? City Manager, can we go on to the next one?
Okay, Roscoe, next slide, please. Okay, comment number 24. A comment also, all the documents sent to me from Silicon Valley, Autobahn, about dark skies and bird-bath-friendly buildings and public lighting. Did it get into the general plan, specific plan? And yes, it did get into the comments in the matrix. We say incorporate light pollution, bird safety glass, and other environmental remediation design standards in the future residential and commercial design guidelines and standards. Collaborate with regional agencies on quality design standards for Millbury projects and ensure city responses to environmental documents, meaning of other agencies such as SFO, or at least by them that we respond to appropriately to protect
Councilmember Snyder, did you have, are you satisfied with that?
I think so, with one clarification. City Manager, I, I think you got everything from Autobahn, but the training that we all, that I attended a few weeks ago talked about the light spectrum, and now I'm going blank. If it's blue light, is actually worse for all of our beneficial animals and human health, or the red-yellow spectrum. But as long as we're aligning any of our new lighting systems with the, the light that will cause less physical damage to animals, of which human beings are one. Do we have that in there? And it's whether it's a blue light spectrum or a yellow light spectrum, and I, I would have to go back to my notes on that.
We, we don't have that specifically, Councilmember, and I look to maybe our environmental planning staff on this, but I, I don't think it would hurt to add something in that, you know, align light spectrums consistent with protection of, of animal species to the greatest extent possible. I don't know enough to know.
And it's also human beings, too. It, it's a human being cancer risk. So if that, if we can work on that, then I'm happy.
Y'all look real quick, not to put Jim Harnish on the spot, but Jim, any issue with, with that, adding that language?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Councilmember Fong has a comment.
Not on that particular item specifically, ma'am, Madam Mayor, but I believe in the previous meeting that I had mentioned the need of having in the general plan mentioning a study or at least a pursuant of a connection between Rollins Road through the end of Murchison at California Drive.
Okay, can, would you mind if we stayed on, on the agenda in the process by we're going, and then we could bring that up?
Sure, absolutely. No problem.
Perfect. And would you be okay with the discussion we just had?
Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect. Then we have three, three votes on that one. Okay, then we'll go to the next comment. Comment number 25, please, City Manager.
Tom is muted.
Tom, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Did we capture San Francisco Bay Keepers comments into the general plan? Yes, we did. And on the matrix, the city staff and consultants did review and consider the Bay Keepers' recommendations before drafting the general plan policies and programs related to sea level rise. There are actually three goals, 10 policies and four programs addressing sea level rise that, that are in the general plan. Also, I remind the council that we are part of the Sea Level Rise Consortium known as One Shoreline. We pay into that annually and are very much involved with, with One Shoreline's, all of their studies and analysis, and obviously further recommendations that will come to the council in the future for remediation of sea level rise. So in the matrix, we've identified those areas in the general plan that address this, and they're all bullet, bulleted in the, in the matrix.
Perfect. So I don't think that we need to, or does anybody have discussion on that? It sounds like it's been, been alleviated here. Comment number 27.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This was a comment, add program for vacant property tax. Prepare an ordinance as, oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, the comment was prepare an ordinance as directed by the City Council to remediate vacant properties and the negative fiscal impact of vacant properties on the city. So that's, that's the the comment.
Yeah, I would be adamantly opposed to this for a couple of reasons. Number one is it's private property rights, whether you have it vacant or not vacant. I also don't even know if we have an issue with vacant property. And I also don't know how in the heck we would police this, and it was never part of our goals being set for the last year. So I would be opposed to putting this as part of our general plan. It's not really a general plan item. Does anybody else have any comments for this? Gina, Vice Mayor Pappin, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm somewhat concerned about this kind of a blanket statement here. Does it refer to commercial property? Does it refer to residential property? I'm not sure this is a proper venue for the general plan here. And, I mean, have we ever done an assessment of what type of properties are vacant, that kind of thing? So if somebody could just answer the question, is this even appropriate for a general plan? I'd appreciate that, but I have concerns about something like this.
So City Manager, do you want to answer that question? And then we'll go to Councilmember Snyder for a comment.
Well, I think, you know, it depends on what the policy direction is of majority of the City Council. I think that this is more of a, I think it is more of a strategic plan, part of the city goals to, to remediate issues, you know, first studied and then identify issues with, with vacant properties, both residential and commercial. In terms of a general plan policy, I'd actually turn to Jim Harnish, our, our lead consultant, to get his thoughts on that.
Thanks, Tom. It's unusual. I mean, it's not, it's not unheard of to address poverty tax issues in a, a general plan, but typically this connected with a broader policy and a, a direction to accomplish some specific things that have been called out in, in some portions of the general plan.
Thank you, Jim. Councilmember Snyder?
I, I'm sorry, I had to step away for the bathroom remodel. I didn't hear about Bay Keepers, but in terms of vacant property tax, if we continue to maintain the number of vacant properties in Millbury, it brings down the existing businesses. So we talk about economic development in the general plan. So discussion of this, to me, fits in the economic development. If it doesn't have the three votes, it'll come back in January.
Okay, so on this particular item, we're probably going to have to call for a vote on it. It appears that there's two, two oppositions. Great. Go ahead, Councilmember Fong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think in general, in terms of a policy direction here, I, I think we need to incentivize our property owners to have their properties being used efficiently and with highest and best use that generates most economic opportunities, both tax revenue as well as economic opportunities for the property owners and our vital economies in our downtown. So with that said, I think, you know, if, if it is a policy direction, then we need to find ways to incentivize our property owners rather than taxing them. We were to have anything in there at all, I think that needs to be stated, a policy goal.
So are you speaking for this or against this? And I will, I see your hand up, Councilmember Holliver, but Councilmember Fong? Are you speaking in favor of this or against this?
Well, I, I look at this as, this needs to be modified, to say, instead of, instead of having a vacant property tax, we need to have programs and directions that actually incentivize the property owners to
So if I understand.
Best use, but not taxing.
So, so I understand that a, a program for vacant property tax, you would be opposed to.
I, I would not be in favor of a tax, no.
Okay, so we Okay, so we have three votes, but I'd really like to hear from councilmember Holibur.
Uh, thank you. You know, I'm not necessarily opposed to this idea, but I don't think the general plan is necessarily the place to address it. It can be addressed through um, the, you know, the um, strategic planning process. You know, we don't know necessarily how many properties are vacant. Um, but I don't think this is the proper avenue for that.
Okay, so I think that um, we have the votes to um, delete this from the general plan. Yet, it looks like council would like further discussion on something in the near future. Um, with that being said, is that everything, uh, city manager?
Mary, there's one more.
I'm sorry.
Um, so comment number fifty-five, uh, proposed hazard, uh, proposed addition to hazard safety and hazard material section. Um, there's two, uh, SFO shall stop all construction operations at the Aviador lot. As it has significant negative impacts and include noise and pollution. Input, none of which SFO mitigates. And the next one is add the GeoTracker and EnviroStar site maps. And, and, and we added verify the accuracy of those maps. So. Roscoe, if you could go to those, those two maps that were submitted to us. So the map on the left, there are um, five areas that have been identified. As potentially hazard. I know, I know that um. At least one of those has been cleaned up. The other ones, what, what we're saying here is it's a good comment. Let us research because I think that this map may be out of date. I think those sites are clean. Um, so I think we can keep it in there, but it's something that. Will, you know, will research and, and. Determine the, the vibe, or the accuracy of this map. And once we have an accurate map, then we will add that map to the general plan.
And the other item? The other.
Uh, the other item on the uh, on the SFO. Site seven, um, bear with me just a minute.
At Aviador.
Yeah, on Aviador. So require SFO to relocate the construction material yard known as Site Seven. Uh, to a more feasible location within SFO environs to eliminate the existing impacts of dust, noise. And truck trips impacting residential and commercial neighborhoods. So I think that that is a, a policy statement, if the city council would like to consider that we can include.
Including it is one thing. I mean, to, trying to make life better for Aviador makes all the sense in the world. I would imagine everybody would, would. Would vote for that, but what, what kind of power do we have to tell somebody that owns property what they could, you know? How, how they can use it.
Yeah, I think that this is, that's, that's a great question. This is one of those that we, that, that we have to just continue to monitor and as SFO. Um, prepares plans and environmental documentation for future expansion, that's the appropriate time to address this issue.
So I would probably not want to include uh, that particular item in our general plan. But I would certainly like to keep that on the radar of our staff and, and our, our future council. And as far as the map goes, definitely uh, keep that in and let's include it once you get an updated map. That's my, those are my comments. Counsel? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I, I think these are good additions here. I just don't know that you can stop. Um, SFO from doing something, having talked to some of the residents in that area. Communication is clear. They need, you know, when they were cleaning out the canal, they never told anybody what they were doing. Um, that's problematic in and of itself. Uh, whatever construction goes, we don't want to be their dumping site. So if they have specific plans, we need to be informed. There needs to be a timeframe, that kind of thing. So uh, if we can word this in such a way that we can ensure there are open lines of communication. Before they do these things and that they will work with us. I think we, it's a better way to approach that. Um, I do agree with the map thing, no problem, but um. The way this is written, I think we need to be more progressive and active in such a way.
Right. So you would be for keeping the, the maps in the general plan and taking out the proposed. Addition to, uh, excuse me, the SFO construction stop out of the general plan. Is that the way I'm hearing you?
I am definitely for the maps. I just think we need, and I am for. This kind of construction thing here, just not the stop language. If we could just tweak that in such a way. Um, because I think it's important that we need to stay on SFO and as to what they do.
How about if we monitored it to Milbrae shall monitor operations at the Aviador?
I think Milbrae shall actively um, communicate.
Alright, I can do that.
Concern, I would be happy with, thank you.
I would, I would, I would like that too.
Did, ju- just for further information, we have communicate with the airport. And their plan is to maintain this as it is, at least for the next twenty years. In terms of their existing use, so just, just FYI.
I'm sorry, the way this is written, that they, they say that, I understand that. But I think in keeping our communication with them and emphasizing the significant negative impacts. Um, and probably flooding in there as well. I think that's important so that we can attempt to mitigate. Their bold statement that they're just gonna do this for twenty years and there's no consideration.
So we're gonna actively moderate and communicate for the next twenty years.
As I said, not to, not to butt in here, but there's opportunity. I think as the airport continues to expand and they release their environmental documents that, you know, provides us the right opportunity. Through the right legal channels and the right planning channels under state law to comment on, on this, on this parcel.
Okay, let's hear from councilmember Fung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I, I appreciate what this statement is trying to do. Um, although what I would. What I think a, a better alternative would be this, like what you guys have talked about a little earlier. Um, continue to find way to work with SFO and have a vision for that location, right, for that plot of land. Uh, rather than saying stop all construction operation, I mean, that, the statement that they made for the next twenty years. About, with regard to their plans on that plot of land for the next twenty years, um, is disheartening. Um, but we want to make sure we keep that open line of communication and continue to work with SFO. And try to have a vision for that piece of property. Um, I think that's, would be a more positive approach to that.
And you are good with the three maps, is that correct? I mean, the, the maps to be included for the uh. The accuracy of the maps on the environmental sites.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the map having there is fine. Um, but we just need to. A better vision for that lot and, and continue to work and pursue those visions with SFO, knowing that.
Councilmember Holibur.
Yeah, thank you. Um, can we maybe hear from legal counsel if the city can uh, require them not to. You know, do their construction operations on that site?
Good question.
That within our purview?
Yeah, that is a good question. You know, so this is a piece of property owned by, you know, a more regional agency for regional purpose. I, I, I don't know. I'm gonna have to actually look more clearly at this. But I don't think we can demand, I think we can seek partnership. Uh, and uh, you know, seek cooperation and coordination.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's really where it is.
So, so maybe we change the language to, you know, encourage SFO to stop construction operations at the Aviador lot. Um, there's a way to massage the language. I, I, unfortunately, I don't think we can enforce this as a requirement.
And encourage SFO to utilize this lot in a manner compatible. Um, with surrounding area. And I, I think we clearly need to be able to communicate the negative impacts to our city. Because if we ever have to take legal action, they need to know what we're going through. So I think that has to be emphasized. Sorry to interrupt.
Um, and if I may inject a little bit, um, you know, we do have um, land use. Um, discretion over that piece of property in terms of land, in terms of zoning and land use. Um, Joan, perhaps in, you know, look in light of those. Um, within a certain land use destination, there are certain things that they can or cannot do with that property. Isn't that true?
Well, I'm gonna, you, you know, regional agencies typically are not subject to local. Land use designation. So um, I am going, I, I should know this and I apologize. But for an international airport, I am not so sure that they have to abide by your zoning building requirement.
If it's for airport activity, right, if it's.
Oh, it has to be for an airport, of course, of course. Now, if they wanted, uh. Councilmember Fung, if they wanted to build a, a transit oriented development or a housing. Um, project, they would have to comply. But if, if their use is somehow related to the international airport, um. And the function of an international airport, I, I imagine that they can override what local rules um, and regulations are in place.
Alright, so we need some direction here on.
Mayor, my hand's been raised.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, um, in the current draft EIR for SFO sea level rise plans. In addition to building nine foot, five foot thick walls all the way around the airport. And filling in five acres of mud flats right next to Milbrae. They plan and they have it broken down year by year, how they're going to use. What they call the Aviador two point six or two point eight acre site. In the meantime, they have removed vegetation that protected the neighborhoods. From both the Gateway Neighborhood and the Bayside Manor Neighborhood. They've reduced the existing vegetation to nothing. They're currently so, storing soil there. We don't know if it's hazardous or not. And they plan on using it for heavy equipment and heavy inert material storage and movement for the next twenty years. And that includes removing riprap and then replacing riprap, doing asphalt operations. Now, if you read the whole, if you read the entire EIR, they have multiple other sites on airport property. On the east side of one oh one. But what they will be doing is running heavy equipment trucks. Along brand new roads in the gateway, along brand new Rollins Road, over the one oh one overpass. Adding to the F minus level that already exists on Milbrae Avenue and Rollins Road. Adding to the dust, they had the nerve at Airport Roundtable to want to move. Noise Monitor Eight, which is in the public courtyard, because it was so noisy. When they were contributing by their construction activity to that noise level. They have never mitigated anything. And the time is now. And both myself and the city manager, I don't know if the city manager's. Letter included comments about what we call Site Seven as incompatible. It is Milbrae's gateway. It is our doorway into Milbrae. And what we look like is a toxic waste dump with plastic covering mounds of dirt. It is an incompatible use with the city of Milbrae. And they have alternatives. That would not put an impact on our roads or on the one oh one overpass.
Councilmember Schneider, I think we're all aware and we're all just as emotional and, and, and passionate as you are. With the regards to the entrance of our city and most importantly, our people on Aviador. Yet.
You guys can vote how you will, it will come back in January.
Excuse me, I'm not so sure that you have the legal, we have the legal capacity to say we're going to stop. I would like.
I'm open to what uh, Councilman Holibur said. But if you think that working with them and cooperating with them is gonna get us anywhere, it will not.
Well, I not, that is a separate issue. So for now, the general plan, I need to know which direction this council would like to go. With regards to what is proposed here to stop SFO. It sounds like there's three votes that say we can't stop them. And we need to reword this and come back at a later date. Do I hear that from three people? I, I think I heard it from councilmember Fung, Vice Mayor Pappen. And ha- kind of from.
Madam Mayor?
Council, yes, please, help.
Um, and I appreciate council uh, member Schneider's compassion here. I do think it is important to maintain something like this language. And as our legal counsel clearly stated, that we emphasize any incompatible uses here. We may also wish to, so rewriting it, I think is important, is what I'm trying to emphasize here. Rewriting it in such a way so that we emphasize incompatible uses. We also try to emphasize that they need to. Rehabilitate natural um, environmental. Deterrence or mitigations there. I, I think this is an opportunity for us to be very clear with them. And that they pursue, as I guess councilmember Schneider had suggested, viable alternatives within other areas of the airport. So it is important. Um, I think we can tweak this in such a way that it would be. Beneficial to the city of Milbrae and clearly send a message to the airport. So.
I would like it, I would like a suggestion on the, on the verbs on the, that want to be used here. Vice Mayor, do you, do you have a way that you'd like to propose this to be rewritten?
Uh, if I can, maybe just pursue, pursue relocation.
Hey, well, it's kind of more than that. It's um. I, I, we could tweak it in such a way and just bring it back here. I do think it's important. That um, we communicate with SFO that incompatible usage. Of this property is not acceptable to us. Um, we seek that. We seek SFO to determine viable alternatives within their other properties. And that we encourage them to um. I, I guess councilmember Schneider could say better, but the, bringing back the natural habitat to reduce the negative impacts.
Environmental impacts. I'm sorry, go.
Well, just for the benefit of the council and additional knowledge, there's also a section. In the general plan that we are going to pursue with our neighboring cities, um, CCAG's update to the airport land use plan. Um, it's out of date. They need to do it. I think, I actually think CCAG is aware that they need to do it. And maybe we incorporate and work with CCAG on the airport land use plan and SFO on this property. That's another mechanism.
I, I think that's too far down the line here. I think we need to put something in the general plan right now as to that aspect. Um, so, uh, to answer your question, Mayor, I think we can tweak this in such a way that it maintains. Our attempts to protect Milbrae and encourages the airport to do the right thing. Should we have, need to seek legal action in the future and also protecting our residents.
Well, I was just gonna ask, uh, Jim, our consultant here, does he have maybe a way that, that he could word this for us? Or help us with the wording?
Yeah, I mean, I, we could do some wordsmithing. That's one of the, I guess, one of the, our skills that we have to weave through this. So um, I, I'm um. Yeah, we can put something together for the council to, to, to consider that would address these issues in a way that is um. Kind of consistent with state law and, and independence of other jurisdictions.
And then Joan, you could find out if we even have any legal stance on this.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm happy to work with the consultant uh, to make it as strong as we can legally make it.
Okay.
That would be acceptable.
Do, sorry, just a quick question. If we were to go down that avenue, does that mean? The whole general plan would come back to the council or just? Or we're delegating Mr. Harnish to provide appropriate language?
That's what I was, I was just gonna ask.
I, I believe the general plan comes back. Um, don't we come back for a sec? Well, I guess the, um, we have so many actions. Um, we do have this on consent. For December thirteenth, at your next meeting. Um, because you do have code amendments that are ordinances which will require a second reading. And um. I guess the general plan, Roscoe, is, is a resolution or is that part of? The ordinance?
No, it should be resolution.
It's a resolution, right, so, so what we could do is um, bring back the resolution with the second reading of the ordinance. Uh, so that you would have a chance to look at the final wording.
Yeah, I I would just add, and it's not unusual, but and I haven't talked with Tom about this, but it's not unusual for the council at this point. I mean, today's meeting expressed an attempt to adopt the general plan based on these changes. Come back, as you said, uh, with the the revised document, uh, essentially on consent calendar. The council members an opportunity to confirm the changes.
Yes, that's, we we do have this on the agenda, uh, at least the the ordinance aspects. Of uh, these many actions and we can include uh, the final resolution. Adopting your general plan and that will give you a chance at least to read what we come up with this final language.
Yeah, and we can, uh, the consulting team can work with, uh, Tom and his staff to, uh, maybe highlight some of these. Uh, topics that were focused of discussion today, so that we kind of pull some of these, this language out to highlight it. So the council members don't have to go searching for it.
Right.
That would be helpful.
Councilmember Holibur, are you, are you satisfied with that?
Yes.
So, is that a motion? To approve? Alright. Go ahead, we have a second?
Is this just on comment fifty-five, because I have a couple other quickies?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I was just referring to comment fifty-five, I had a couple other uh, minor comments as well.
Okay, so fifty-five looks like it's a go with subject to looking at the revision before the next meeting on. Uh, the thirteenth. Alright, let's go to council comments on anything else now. Councilmember Holibur, go ahead.
Sorry, cut, you know, Vice Mayor Pappin can go first. Is her hand up?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you and my apologies, um, I'm gonna go really fast here because they're very, very minor, uh, item four. Uh, you got station area and it just says encourage development of amenities and I can submit this. You've got improvement of signage and real time, actually, I can live with that one, sorry about that, item ten. Item ten, existing residential neighborhoods, this seems somewhat awkward as it's currently written. Uh, revised introduction of there, because of development pressure and growing Bay Area. Can somebody just fix that as written? This was in Elaine's thing, I don't.
Sorry, which one, number ten, I don't see that.
Oh, sorry, right, but I'm gonna, my mistake, item ten, can we add something with the council? Wish to add something here, you've got entrepreneurship, should we put in uh, maker spaces? It's not necessary, I was just curious as to my colleagues. This is economic development is item ten. Do we want that? Is it important?
Vice Mayor, I would agree with you on maker spaces, what I had asked for was, I think it's called service retail. So places where you can come in and learn how to sew, like a Joann's can have, or a Michael's where you learn how to frame. Or a a ceramic shop where you can throw pots, but also have parties there. And I think the term is service retail, but I could be wrong, and and yet, a- and it. And it's a form of entertainment at the same time.
I just think that's more of a retail business, Councilmember Schneider.
It has, I I I could, it it very well could be, but I know that they're talking about. It's not enough to have just retail now, to pull retail in, they have to have an experience at the same time. And that's the direction of trying to get people in a store.
Try to do that, so I I was just curious about maker spaces or specific um, format.
Understood, I've been to them, I attend them, I support you in that.
Um, any other council members interested?
Yeah, I could support that.
Okay, thank you, um, thank you, so that's item ten, just the addition of maker spaces. Item fourteen is just awkwardly written, uh, item fourteen, same page, you have. Because of development pressure and growing Bay Area. Where to go? Or it looks different, yeah, development pressure and growing Bay Area, that's just awkward. A growing Bay Area or? Development pressures.
Population growth.
Population growth, that just, can somebody please just tweak that one little area there, it's awkward. Do you understand what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think we could say something like, you know, because of development pressures and population growth.
Okay, something like that, it just flows better, thank you very much, um, item sixteen there. Uh, state law to include all areas of the city and implement paid parking, um. I think you want to put to implement, because we really haven't studied that yet, uh, by saying and or. Do we need to be just a little more subtle here? Yeah, because if we just put it in as two, then we can go through the whole process, is everybody okay with that? Um. Item seventeen.
I'm just curious, why weren't these uh, submitted last Tuesday, before last Tuesday?
Because I didn't get on it, my fault, and I'm trying to go as quickly as possible. Uh, item seventeen, the station also provides a connection to, um, that is slightly awkward. Uh, the station provides an opportunity, shouldn't we put an opportunity for a single station of seamless transportation? The way it's written, you have, the station also provides a connection to the international airport as. A single station for seamless transit. We do want to emphasize, this is an opportunity for all the operators. Come together in a seamless, so just slightly awkwardly written.
Vice Mayor, can I interrupt? In this same box on my comments, I questioned why. Um, secondary access to Marina Vista neighborhood, the grade separations are here when they're not stationary. I do get that it's related to increased train traffic, but um, that's a separate thing and my comments. And it, but it's covered in another part of of the plan is that it's. The only solution to Marina Vista is not just grade separations. And that's the east side plan to look at all alternatives for the east side.
Right, I.
It just is weird putting it in the station area box.
Right, I I agree with Councilmember Schneider on that, it is in another location. So you may want to move that and.
Uh, sorry, while we're on seventeen, I had, um, can you change Marino to Marina? I don't know, there's some document that says Marino that has been referenced a number of times, it's incorrect, thank you.
So just, so just count, that was specifically how we received it, but we'll, we'll change it.
Okay, and so my guidance here is that we need to emphasize a single station. Or to enhance the connection with S F O and all the other, so it's just awkward. And I think we can fix that, is everybody okay? Uh. Two quick final comments here, uh. Thirty-five. Uh, you spelled buses wrong. Yeah, there you go, easy fix on that one. Final question for me is, we did mention childcare. I know it's in there somewhere, can somebody just bring that out, it wasn't in our summary. It is in there, is that correct to our advisors? Not sure where you had it. Hello, oh, there it is, number eleven, thank you, I'm done, thank you very much, my apologies, Madam Mayor.
Okay, yeah, no wordsmithing, let's get to the point here, Anders, you're up.
Thank you, um, I believe the last meeting would discuss the, um, including um, a study. Or at least, uh, the initiative of pursuing a connection point between Rollins and the end of Murchison. I was expecting that to be on this matrix.
I remember the conversation. City manager, did you have an explanation where I didn't make it to the matrix?
Sorry, is on me, uh, no, we can certainly include it. I think, I thought it was included, but we will, we'll make sure that it is included, because that was a a a point of discussion and direction by the council.
Yeah, it was on tape, uh.
Yeah, we will make sure that that is included in the circulation element.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, council member. Uh, Councilmember Holibur. Did you have any more comments?
Yeah, two quick ones, uh. On number four. Can you, can we change future high speed rail to potential high speed rail? There's no guarantee that it's going to be built. Vice Mayor Pappin, okay with that?
Well. I think, I think we need to put future because it is in a state law that it will be.
Well, the project is unfunded. We have existing litigation with the High Speed Rail Authority, I. I think it would be better to, you know, view it as what it is, which is somewhat of a speculative project.
Okay, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, um, one other minor one, number fifteen. Um, can we say, instead of just study roundabout, can we say study roundabout or traffic signal? And other traffic calming measures at Meadow Glen, I don't want to be pigeonholed into that. Having to be a roundabout if a traffic signal may be more um, cost effective and. There are a number of issues with roundabouts, you know, the traffic doesn't stop, it's not particularly pedestrian friendly, so. I'd like to have the option of that being a a signal as well, that's that's all that I have. Thank you.
I think Councilmember Schneider's hands, I'm not sure if it's still up or just.
Thank you, Mayor, um, in reading and rereading the S F O letters, it talks about. Um, it implies that the city should do its own noise study. In terms of decibels and noise contours, but in lieu of that insert. It's it's written in there that will add the noise contour map that we should use the existing FAA map. It's not in this matrix, the problem with the FAA map is, of course. The FAA does not consider low frequency noise from and back of airplanes and to the sides in their calculations of contours. So if we were to include that existing map that S F O and the FAA like to point out, it is inaccurate. So if we put it, we need to address the inaccuracies. Or, given that I still don't think the general plan talks about Millbrae's history. Millbrae's treatment by S F O and the transportation agencies, it can come back at a later date. With a more detailed discussion of noise from multiple source sources and how to mitigate each one. So, I mean, Caltrain has done no mitigation, Bart has done no mitigation, we don't talk about a a quiet. What is it called, a horn quiet zone, which is problematic since we are a major station. But with the advent of trains, even right now, the trains seem to be louder now, could be weather conditions. But we haven't talked about the uh. Corn quiet zone, I think is the right terminology, and you know, I don't want to hold it up now, we can bring back a whole new section on noise. In the new year, because we really need to tell our story on noise, instead of having S F O do whatever it damn well feels like.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, um, I think we can put something in as to sit, because that whole um. Quiet zone, I think you have to go through the federal government, but I think we could put something in here in seeking the opportunity. To become a quiet zone, um, would be sufficient if Councilmember Schneider is.
That sounds great.
So something like that could move it along and um, I do think some cities have done it, but you have to go through the feds, we'd have to talk to our congress.
Process, I would just point out that. Once we're elected, the noise will reduce substantially.
No, they still have to run the horns, and because we have two at great crossings, they'll be running the horns a lot more than they do in other cities. And when you hear from Marina Vista neighborhood, it's the horns.
Yeah, it's the Union Pacific, it's not Caltrain. So, I think we.
There is a process, uh, Councilmember Pappin is right, there is a process we could consider.
Thank you, just if we could add that in, be great.
Already, I think those are all come, so, city manager, where do we go from here? Uh, what's, we we we're back with these adjustments on the thirteenth? Or the second hearing or?
Madam Mayor, I I was going to suggest, I think that the council is now ready to actually pass the resolution. Uh, certifying the E I R, I mean, I I believe we're we're there. Um, then I think the second resolution, which is a approving the adoption of your update to your general plan, what you could do. Is um, have a preliminary approval, uh, with the understanding that final language in a few areas will be brought back to the council. On December thirteenth, the final approval, and then I would ask you to waive the first reading. And introduce your ordinance on amendments to the zoning code. Roscoe, Tom, does that sound good to you?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good.
Hey, so does everybody understand what Joan just said? So move.
Jim, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, we need to adopt the specific plan as well.
Oh, that's in the resolution, right? Right, and related.
I think we need to call for a public comment.
Certification, Joan, of the E I R would be the first action, just.
Yes, certification, but I'm I'm hearing that we haven't asked for public comment if there is any.
Public, is there anybody on public that would like to speak? I see none, Elaine? Okay, Carlos. Carlos.
Hello, can you hear me, it's Carlos Valdez.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, hi, uh, good afternoon, uh, mayor and city council members, uh, what I would like to talk, uh, is something specific. Uh, once again, my name is Carlos Valdez, I am a field representative for Car- uh, Carpenter's Local Union two seventeen. And I would like to talk about the need for area standards for our community. And um, you may ask yourself, what is area standards? Well, area standards, you know, standard for a apprenticeship, livable wages, healthcare, local hire. And when it comes to apprenticeship, construction apprenticeship programs are a proven escalator. To the middle class, trading tens of thousands of Californians, uh, residents every year, and not goes to taxpayers. Because of an increase. Wages and lack of student debt, construction apprentices can be a better. Option for many young people than a traditional undergraduate program. Livable wage, the need for a livable wage that allows workers and their families to live in their communities that they work in. This also means those wages will go back into our communities as they spend their earnings. And their tax dollars will help keep funding local schools and government, healthcare. Do you know that nearly fifty percent of California construction workers rely on some form of public assistance? And that one out of four constructions in California lack uh, health insurance. That is uh, two and a half times the rate for a California, for all California workers. Local, uh, across the states, major projects often import an out of area or out of state workforce instead of training. And building a local construction for workforce. Local hire policies help ensure that new developments benefits all members of the community. By adding every standard language to the city's prequalification. You will show. Your constituents that you value not just the city, but also the man and woman building the city itself. I would like very much. To have a real and valuable conversation with each and every one of you. Thanks.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I don't think there's any other public comments.
Vice Mayor Pappen.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, Mayor, I thought we lost you there. I know you're at an airport.
I I I'm back on. Okay, I'm sorry. We had a motion to approve.
Uh, wait a minute, Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor, we need to set.
Second.
Hold it.
Tell me.
Second. Um, I do think this might be the opportunity as um. Mr. Valdez said, just to add the um area standards. I think it's in section eleven. You do have realistic living wages. You could just throw in the comment. Um, if that's the proper terminology. I would be um encouraging of that.
I'd support that.
And I'd like to modify my motion if we can reach some consensus to include that.
I believe it's included, but yes, to make to make sure that it's included because I believe it is included.
Um, it's not at this point, but I think we can easily do that if we have consensus.
One, two, do we have a third?
Yes.
Okay, then I'd like to make the motion with that modification.
So. Does your motion include? All three actions?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so let's just be clear. We are approving the resolution certifies the environmental impact report. Um, we are approving a resolution at this point, which is going to give preliminary approval. Uh, to the general plan, the specific plan and um uh. All that's contained in the resolution that's attached to your record. We will bring that back. Um, on the December thirteenth consent calendar for final approval to look at some of. The final language tweaks. And then we are um, we are introducing the ordinance and waiving the first reading. For our zoning ordinance amendments in the Millbrae Municipal Code.
Gina?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, are you? Is good for you? Okay. Do we have a second?
Mayor. Second, call for the vote, please.
Uh, did we close public comment because another hand was raised? Did you officially close public comment?
That's a good point. I'm not sure.
I don't see a hand raised. I did not. I don't see a hand raised.
It was. It's gone now.
Okay, so. Okay. It's closed.
And now it's back up again.
Call. Let's call for them.
Madam Mayor, someone's hand is still just went up again.
Call for the vote, please. Call for the vote.
Okay, we're calling for the vote.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Sorry, the contractors are here. Um. I'll say yes, but I'm not really fond of the process, especially that we have two new council members coming on board. But yes, and we can always readdress in the new year. Thank you.
Councilmember Oliver?
Hi.
Councilmember Fong?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Leva?
Hi.
The public hearing item passed by the vote of five to zero.
Okay. We have no other items on our agenda. So I would like to. In the meeting.
I could just have been here quickly. Um. Can I just confirm that the last vote was to approve the resolution? I believe. We might need a second vote. To introduce the first reading of the ordinance for the uh. Zone changes if it's the council's discretion to do so.
I thought we included that, but it was like a second.
It was all of the above.
It was all the above, yeah.
So Ellis, I think there there is is your concern that they need to finally approve the resolution on the general plan of the.
No, no. No, I I I wasn't clear that that was part of the um.
Oh, yeah.
Our motion, but if it was, then that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
So just in summary, the the vote was to certify the EIR and adopt the resolution. Adopting the general plan. And these downtown specific plan and an ordinance adopting the zoning code changes.
Yes, they're going to introduce the ordinance and they're waiving the first reading.
Yes.
Correct. All done together.
All right.
With the caveat that the second reading, also the resolution with these minor changes of language, we will bring back.
The minor edits.
Correct. Yeah. All right.
All right, team. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Thanks to Jim and his team and everyone else. Really appreciate everybody's effort, especially from the fifteenth to today. Um, a lot of a lot of great work to get this over the finish line, so thank you.
Thanks, everybody.